Okay, welcome to this Wednesday, May 9th, to the Troy Planning Committee meeting. Please call the roll.
Mr. Capper?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Ms. Mayhem?
Here.
Mr. Titterington?
Here.
Ms. Snee?
Here.
Mr. McGary?
President?
We have a forum.
Okay, we have our minutes of our April 25th meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve those minutes.
Motion is second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Hearing none. First matter to come before the commission is an application to have the downtown riverfront overlay district applied to 846 West Main Street and 31 South Cedar Street. At the last meeting, we had tabled this for consideration. Mr. Walkie wanted to go ahead and get the opinion of Mr. Titterington and Mr. Beamish, who were absent. Of course, Mr. Walkie's absent today. So, the first thing to do is remove this from the table if the commission wants it removed.
Motion is second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Mayhem?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Ms. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Motion is approved. I will take them from table.
Okay, now, we've learned a lot at the last meeting because we had our first public hearing on this type of DRO district. We are now entertaining the public hearing for this. Does staff have a report that it wants to conduct for the public hearing?
Yes, I do.
Go right ahead.
So, at the last meeting, I think there was still a few questions left about what the DRO district was designed to do. Basically, it was created to allow for creative use and reuse of properties where the zoning, the straight zoning requirements were, might be inappropriate, or the underlying zoning district might be unduly restrictive. The DRO district that was designated and approved encompasses a large portion of some of the oldest properties within the city of Troy. At the time of the creation of those lots, they would have most likely met the zoning requirements at that time. However, in today's zoning, those lots would now be considered legal non-conforming lots. With today's zoning, it's very difficult to redevelop a property that is a legal non-conforming use. So, the DRO district then was created to help alleviate some of those issues that legal non-conforming properties face when using a straight zoning district, such as the case for 846 West Main Street and 31 South Cedar Street. The Main Street property, in the B2 district, the minimum lot size requirement is 40,000 square feet. 846 West Main Street has a total area of 15,681 square feet, so not even half of the required lot area. 31 South Cedar Street is also required to have 40,000 square feet in area. It has basically 2,600 square feet of area, so a very, very small property, but still a property all the same that is there that can be redeveloped. The DRO there again allows for that redevelopment of properties that are legal non-conforming. So, once again, I've listed in my report the 17 criteria that are to be weighed when the planning commission is looking at approving a possible DRO application. With those criteria, by applying the DRO, the properties in question would provide for a creatively designed, single-use plan development while preserving its character and vitality through ongoing regulatory supervision. It also would preserve and enhance property values, promote economic vitality of business and industry, and want to prove the aesthetic character of parts of the city. We don't have a vacant, grassy lot just sitting there with nothing on it to enhance the city of Troy. So, once again, it is the recommendation of staff that planning commission provide a positive recommendation to city council for the DRO application contingent upon the signed copy of the parking agreement being recorded with the Miami County Recorder's Office.
Any questions of staff?
I think you said it very well on why we're doing what we're doing, and we are unique in doing this, but it's for the good, and it does, as you said, non-conforming, it really helps us to kneel things down. Thank you for sharing that, and that's how I feel as well.
Shannon, you indicated that the DRO was created for a creative use or reuse of the property.
That's directly out of the ordinance.
Okay. I fail to see how a bank building is a creative reuse of this property.
The uses, it's still, whether it would be in the DRO district or the straight zoning district, a bank is still a permitted use in a B2 district. The only difference here, by applying the DRO designation, it allows for the use of a legal non-conforming property. Without the DRO designation, you then get into applying for variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals, and there are very strict requirements when doing that. The DRO, however, allows for more of a creative give and take, if you will, between the city and the applicant, so that way, there again, there's still not a vacant lot just sitting there not being developed. So, the use is, the DRO isn't really, in this case, is it addressing the use of the property? The use is a permitted use in that zoning district. It's actually addressing the setback requirements for the property.
If this DRO were not approved, would they have the ability to come back before the VCA then and request the variance? That would seem to be the next logical step if it were not approved.
That's correct.
The variance process, though, is a little different than the DRO. Here, you're looking at the 17 factors and making that determination. With the variance, you have to have a hardship in different things. One of the reasons we kind of did the DRO was, in this case, the lot is, what, less than half the current lot size requirement? And so, what we felt we have done as a city is restricted what can go on there. Without having a shotgun building of something, we want to have a nice development that's viable, which is why we have recommended the approval of this, not necessarily for the bank use, but for any development, just because of the hardship that we have probably put on the property when it's being redeveloped, because it is so small to what we currently require and our setback requirements.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Snee.
I was just going to say, it seemed to me last time when this came up that we focused on this idea of a creative use, as if the use itself had to be something new and creative. And to me, the way I see this is that we have a business corridor down into our downtown that has, as has been described, legal non-conforming uses already, and that the creative use can also encompass creatively using a piece of property for something that might not have fit there based on our current zoning, rather than having to wait and wait until something that we viewed as creative would locate there. So, to me, I think that a use like this, even though a bank, yes, there are more than one bank, or, you know, many banks in Troy, is a creative reuse of that property because of where it is, so.
Yes, Mr. Titterton. I've shared my opinions with Mr. Walkie. I appreciate him waiting for the mayor and me to get back, but just to piggyback on Mrs. Snee's comments, the creative use is, if you look at Shannon's report, number four out of 17 different criteria that can and shall be, you know, should be considered by the planning commission. So, it's not the only criteria, and certainly, creative reuse of property is an eye of the beholder, but it's also, you know, maybe more relevant, or less relevant, depending on where it is, what was used before, and the extensiveness of the redevelopment. Where I think I would draw the line is if we have an existing building, we have an existing use, and the attempt is to use the DRO overlay process to get, solely to get around restrictions that otherwise would apply. And I think in this case, since we are talking about a brand-new use, basically scraping it down to the ground level and making a significant upgrade to what was there previously, not to take away from what was there, because it was a viable business for a long time, but when you look at both lots and how this cleans that whole area up, I think you could argue that, I would argue that it is a creative use, not as creative as the other one that we've looked at, because that was certainly out of the box and along the river, and I'm sure that we will have future DRO applications that might be more obviously, quote-unquote, creative. But I think in this case, it does fit that, but I did want to, and I did tell Mr. Walkie that, you know, I'm going to be sensitive to those kind of applications where there are buildings there and where there are properties that, property owners, whether they are residential or commercial, that want to do something that, and then they're trying to use the overlay district to blatantly get around those restrictions.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. McGary?
I, my mind was going both directions too after the last meeting, and I reviewed the, re-reviewed the ordinance in a little more detail, and I would tend to talk about some comments and discussion, but the big thing I saw in that, and the creative use is not necessarily the use, because when you stop any creative use, I mean, even that Water Street, okay, it's three townhouses, it's residence, you know, residential units, it's, it could be a bar, a restaurant, whatever, but it's creative about any of that, nothing. I think it was the creative design for a specific problem, piece of property. So, you come up with a design that gets you to setbacks that are livable, you know, usable, maybe the square footage isn't matching. It's not the creative use per se, type of business or type of structure, but the design of the structure on the lot being creative, I think that's the way I looked at it more than use.
Any other questions of staff?
Can I point out one item, too?
Yes.
I wanted to clarify this when Jim and I were talking. We went back to the intent, and we always go back to the intent of the ordinance, and when you're reading it, it talks about the intent, it says strictly, or it says here, "The intent of this section is that the downtown riverfront overlay process be applied in situations where the conventional zoning requirements are inappropriate and unduly restrictive." And we went back to the non-conforming lot size, saying that, are we being restrictive on somebody coming in to develop it? So, whether it's a bank or it's somebody with the term creative use that comes in, they're going to have to go through that same process because our zoning code is restrictive, that's really the only reason they're here.
It's restrictive, but at the same time, if they compress the building, it would fall within your guidelines, would it not?
It could, but then does it become a viable development? I mean, we can, we can put a shoebox on the property and have it fit, but, you know, would it be, would it be viable?
But from a more, Mr. Chair, from a more practical matter, you know, because I know staff talked about that, and to try to restrict it would mean turning certain elements around, which would then make the internal traffic flow more difficult. So, there were considerations that we, that were taken that had to do with, frankly, wanting to kind of limit the traffic and control the traffic, particularly out on West Main Street. And that area right there is a congested area, and it's undersized. So, that was one of the things, and that is one of the criteria that's on this 17, no more than less.
Any other questions of staff? Staff have any other comments? Public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak on behalf of the application, would you come forward, please? Anyone here who would like to speak against the application, come forward. I made it real easy. Okay, we have a matter to consider.
Do you have a public hearing question?
She just did. Public hearing is now closed.
I would, I would make a motion to make a positive recommendation to our city council that would approve the application. And, you know, the area we're talking about, I think there would be an improvement, that's a sidebar, but I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there support for the motion?
Mr. Mayor, would you maybe consider amending your motion to include that it's contingent upon the parking agreement being recorded with the recorder's office?
Sure, I think that was in the report somewhere, I just, but I still stand by that motion.
Is there support for the motion?
Second.
Mr. McGary, second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Mayhem?
Yes.
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 McGary?
Yes.
Capper?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Next matter to come before the commission?
I have a question.
Yes.
And this is maybe going to get clarified with the law record. Normally, when something is recommended contingent, it does not go on to council until the contingency is handled, and here we have something that has a quick abstract to counsel.
Okay, Grant, you want to weigh in on that?
I guess my question would be for the applicants, when they anticipate that document being recorded.
Well, the parking agreement?
Yes.
It's in our current lawyer's agreement right now, so hopefully by then.
Well, I guess what I would suggest at this point in time is instruct upon proof that the parking agreement has been submitted, that's going to be when the final action of the planning commission is, and that will start the five-day window upon receipt of the recorded parking agreement, and then that's the one that will be forwarded to council to start the five-day period.
So, that's not when it's actually stamped and recorded, but when it's filed into the recorder's office, because that could take some...
Well, and once it's forwarded to the planning commission, what we would have is, once they submit that, it needs to be submitted to the planning commission, and then that's when the planning commission's recommendation will become final. Does that make sense?
No. Let me back up. When it's recorded over at the courthouse is when the five days will start?
Well, when the recorded document is submitted to planning commission.
That could be a week or two weeks.
Showing the satisfaction of the contingency.
That could be a week or two weeks after it's recorded.
Could it not be sent via email, a copy of it?
Well, I mean, my understanding of the contingency was that it was recorded.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to come back to the planning commission.
Because we already made that as a movement.
Well, it could, we could...
Could just go to the second.
Yeah, I mean, you certainly can say that, once it's, once it's recorded, that's when the five-day window, but the problem we get is, is the clerk has to forward that on to the council members, the city council members to act upon it, and as you know, doing real estate law, that oftentimes, something could be recorded and you don't know about it, officially get it back for three or four or five days, and we don't want to deprive city council of their opportunity to step in.
Sure.
So, it really, that recorded document, and, you know, there's ways to expedite that to, you know...
You walk it over.
You walk it over, get it recorded, and then get it to the planning commission, is what I would suggest in this situation.
Do we need to take any action to place that process in our minutes, or is that just a...
Well, I think I would clarify with a follow-up motion indicating how that contingency is satisfied.
Do you want to submit such a motion?
How would you suggest the motion?
Well, my suggestion would be that the planning commission, the planning commission's recommendation...
Stays its recommendation until such time as we have the...
Correct.
The document in front of us, possibly.
There you go.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Anybody want to make such a motion?
Motion is second.
Mr. Chairman, has made a motion, is there support for the motion?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll on this motion.
Mr. Titterton?
Yes.
Ms. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Capper?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Mayhem?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on that? All right. Historic district application for 10 North Market Street is, we need to remove this from the table as well, if we want to consider.
Motion is second.
Motion removed.
Second by Mr. McGary.
All those in favor? We have to, roll call, please.
Snee?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Capper?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayhem?
Yes.
Titterton?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Mayhem?
Yes.
Mr. Titterton?
Yes.
Okay, staff have a report?
Yes, we do. So, at the last meeting, planning commission had some questions concerning the sign that's being requested at 10 North Market Street, specifically concerns with the size of the logo on the sign, and also the angles and colors of the logo. Since that meeting, I have met with the applicant, Kristen Schulte, and she's recently opened her practice in the city of Troy, and she described to me, she talked to me concerning, basically, her philosophy on physical therapy, and how, when you look at your, at her website, it says that "one degree difference in care that will bring your health great change." Her logo and the name of her business reflects that philosophy. Ms. Schulte is here today to further explain to the planning commission how she developed the business name and the business logo. She did meet with a marketing company to help with the development of both of those, and basically, how the logo and the colors associated with the logo are an integral part of her philosophy, and basically, the whole reason why she went into physical therapy. So, also included in your packet, Mr. Cappers had questions last time concerning, basically, an inventory of signs. So, I went around the downtown, and I took pictures of, I won't say all, but a large majority of signs within the downtown, and basically, when you think of signs on an individual basis, you don't really realize how many different signs we do have until you take pictures of all of them. And I kind of realized that we basically have a whole mixture of signs, some very eclectic, some very traditional, and basically, just a wonderful mix of signs. Some examples that are included in the packet are Up and Running with their orange and blue lettering and the abstract symbol of a person running, Winners Computer with their futuristic computer on their sign, and actually, one of my favorites, Tokyo Pink King with the oriental style lettering and their takeout box with chopsticks. So, as you can see, based on the pictures, we do have a wide range of signage within the downtown. So, if Ms. Schulte would like, if you could come up and state your name in your...
No, 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 wait a minute. I'm looking for the staff report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, okay. I'm sorry, that was part of my staff report.
Are you finished with your staff report?
Yeah, it would be the, to follow up, it would be the recommendation of staff to approve the proposed sign based upon the following: one, the proposed sign meets the city of Troy's sign code requirement, and two, the proposed sign complements the existing colors of the building.
Thank you. Does staff have any questions?
Yeah, just, since I wasn't here, and we did try to jip the meeting on our webcam, but of course, Murphy's Law being what it is, it was not working at the time, and so we met, we got in after this. Not understanding, and it didn't come out very well in the minutes, what the concerns were of the rest of the committee as to the sign. It looks like it's a two-by-eight sign, Shannon?
Yes.
And is that a dark blue or a blackish-blue?
It started out white.
Right.
It's now dark blue.
Dark blue, okay. And so, I guess, for my identification, just wondered what some of the concerns were from the rest of the committee, the commission.
I'll speak on my own behalf. The historic district application's always bothered me when we're talking about, what is our responsibility as a planning commission on the historic district sign applications? Are we trying to go ahead and maintain historic integrity of the district itself? Do we go ahead and just say, okay, this is a list of colors you have to use? Are we taking a look at what might have happened in the 1800s, early 1900s, and be historic in that fashion? And that's where the concern came about. I don't know what our position is as a planning commission on historic district applications. I would love to have a workshop or some sort of discussion among all of us as to what we should be looking for in historic district applications, because I don't see these figures here, the angles and things, being something that might have taken place on signage in the 1800s, early 1900s. Now, when I asked Shannon to go ahead and take these pictures, I wanted to go ahead and see if we had done anything of a precedential nature to go ahead and say, okay, you know, we've done this in the past, we have to do it right now, and we basically ignore responsibilities as a historic district, historic district applications in the signage. As an aside, Shannon, are you saying that all these pictures, all these signs have been approved, historic district application signage?
Yes.
They have all been approved, okay. So, that's where I was coming from when I asked the question last time. I'm looking for any guidance whatsoever as to what we should be looking for in historic district applications, because if it is something subjective, I need to know what the subjective criteria are. If it's something that's rote and material, like the signage area or the signage on the frontage of the building, then I think we can all say that that's in there, and that's all there is to it. I don't know. Anybody got any ideas?
Well, I guess, as a point of clarification, this really isn't a planning commission responsibility per se, but more of a architectural review board, which responsibilities have been delegated to the planning commission in lieu of having a separate board. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Does that predates...
Yeah, we don't have one anymore.
Right. And so, when I look at that, it is, my understanding of the responsibilities have been that it is subjective, and of course, the more subjective you get, the harder it is to pinpoint criteria, because it's just, again, not to overuse, same word I used in the last discussion, but eye of the beholder. And I know that we've, we've had some lively discussions in the past about sign applications, and in at least one case that I can remember recently, we had a couple of iterations, and I think the final product is, looks great. I mean, it's not historic, it's not, you know, 1800s, but I don't know, I wasn't around back then, so I don't know what the signs looked like. I just look at this compared to some of the other signs that we've got, and in relation to the surrounding properties, to see if it sticks out like a sore thumb, or if it's compatible with the area. And certainly, when I saw the first version before it came here, and it was a white background, it was very stark, it was very bold, and staff rightly, I think, went back and said, can we, can we try again before the planning commission looks at this? And I, when I saw the final one that was being submitted, I felt a lot, lot more comfortable, but that was a subjective view on my part.
I'd take a look at it and say, is this modernistic? And if it's modernistic, by definition, it's not historic. Is this modernistic, or is it historic? I like the sign. Don't get me wrong. But are we fulfilling our responsibilities if Alan likes a sign, but it's not historic? I don't know.
But is historic the only criteria we're supposed to be looking at? I don't have, I don't have the list of criteria.
Yeah, I mean, it's mass, it's size, mass, it's a fit in with the building, I mean, they are pretty, pretty general standards. There's no criteria that says it should meet this and fall within this box, so even in the zoning code, it talks about that.
Do you have the section of the code that falls under?
Well, and if I may ask, Mr. Chair, if a sign then meets the sign code requirements, would you say, Mr. Davis, that it meets the intent of any, any general standards that are being described for the historic district? If it's based on size and mass and colors?
And then if it's respectable to the area, that's really what we're looking at. As Patrick talked about, being something that's stark and sticks out, it's not something we're looking for, something that blends in well and fits, but...
And may I ask a specific question about this sign? I drove by this property, and there is a sign up on this building that says, I believe, Troy Business Center or something.
North Market Business Center.
Something Business Center, North Market Business Center. And that sign is centered on the building. Is this sign going to be to one side of that, so that each side could potentially Is this sign going to be to one side of that, so that each side could potentially have a business sign?
That's correct.
On it?
When you're facing the building, it will be to the right of the existing signs.
And, and knowing the size of this, but not the sign of that, is it a comparable size to the center sign?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have those criteria?
Yeah, it says here, "The sign shall be in keeping with the character of the adjacent environment. Excessive size and inappropriate placement results in visual clutter and shall be avoided. A good sign should relate harmoniously to exterior building material, texture, and color, express a simple, clear message, and contain a minimum number of words." And then it talks about mechanical systems and different things that don't apply to the signs.
What is the code reference?
That is 114322. F-18.
F-18?
F-18, yep.
And that's in the section concerning...
That's in Historic District overlay, mm-hmm.
I didn't hear a whole lot of guidance there either.
Well, I didn't know it is a subjective.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have any questions to staff? I'll move to approve. Is there a motion to approve?
And I will second it.
Second by Mrs. Snead. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. McGary?
Yes.
Capper?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayhend?
Yes.
Titterington?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Next, may I recount, I mean, before the commission, is the preliminary plan for villages of Concord, does staff have a report?
Yes, we do, thank you. Roger Hawk, who is not with us today, on behalf of Troy Investment Group LLC, has applied for a preliminary plan for the villages of Concord. This is located just south of Wayne Street, north of the Kroger Development off of 55. You recall, in early 2000, this subdivision came before you as a private condo community. A portion of this was developed, essentially, it's a total of 16 acres, and then approximately 6.5 acres has already been developed. So, the rest of the development will have, the remaining 10 acres, will be developed into 35 building lots, they will be single-family lots. The zoning of the area is R6 and R7, which do allow single-family zoning for this area, and also, it contains a pond and a clubhouse, which was already dedicated with the, I guess we'll call it the first section or the previous development. The roadways are private, they will remain private, they will not change, they're already laid out. They're named as Lantern Lane and Paul Revere Way. The lots I talked about, the lots being 35 buildable lots, they have to have a minimum of 6,000 square feet. They range from 6,011 square feet to 24,393 square feet, which is approximately a half acre. The open space, one of the things we refer to, since this is not a planned development, it is straight zoning, it has to require 3% of open space to be used by the development, and so, we have the pond, the area, which is called the common area with the pond. We've included that with the private clubhouse, which has the outdoor swimming pool, that encompasses over an acre itself of 1.3, so they, they exceed the 3% that is required by the code, and it talks...
Can I stop you right there?
Yeah.
And ask a question if I might for clarification?
Yeah.
The pond is owned by the condominium association, or by Mr. Hawk, send it in?
The pond is owned by the condo association, but currently, the condo association is controlled by Mr. Hawk.
And the clubhouse is also owned by the condo association?
That's correct.
Okay, and there are other owners of the condo association, because the condominium has sold units out there, so Mr. Hawk's not the only owner of the condominium association.
Okay. That's correct.
So, the, the statement that he's making here, the existing clubhouse will be open to use by the entire subdivisions, not entirely correct, because condo owners have the right to go ahead and say, yeah or no, as to the use of that.
Yeah, he is the majority of the owners of the vote of the condo association, and will require that to be listed on the final plat, if the final plat, if this does go onto a final plat.
Until such time as these lots aren't using the condo, and once these lots aren't using the condo, he's got no stake in it anymore. How is he the majority owner of the condominium association, when the condo units themselves are all privately owned by others?
The information he provided to us, which shows it was recorded, talks about that he has control until 70%, or, and there was a number, of the development is completed, then it turns over to the residents, who the condo association then sets up a president, vice president, and the association. So, according to that document, he actually controls and makes the decision, regardless of the other owners who do not have claim to it, because 70% of the development was not completed.
That's 70% of the condo development.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the condo development's going to stop as soon as we approve this, or council approves, or whoever it is.
Correct.
Because those lots will be taken out of the condominium regime.
Correct.
So, at that point in time, Mr. Hawk didn't have anything to say about it, it's the rest of the unit owners.
But then he would actually, before it goes through, because once it goes through, what he would do at the final plat, between now and the final plat, he was going to have that changed at the recorder's office, and then on the final plat, it would state that, then that, they would become a part of that association, and it all would control it.
Immediately after the final plat's approved, those condominium documents will be re- amended to, to take that off the books, is what can happen.
Okay. That, that, I guess that could happen, yeah. We were thinking we'd make a requirement in the final plat section, that it was listed on there, and when it was recorded, it would, it would state on there that all property owners, and he would list the property owner lots, would have access to the private club and become a part of the association. That's what we were thinking of doing.
Yeah, but I don't think you can, in my opinion, Mr. Kerber's here, but my opinion is that you can't bind other people that aren't part of you to your transaction, so those other unit owners who have, will have 100% ownership of the clubhouse and the pond...
Oh, could change it without their...
Could change their mind and preclude, whatever you say in the plat, and Mr. Hawk's saying the plat...
Could be changed.
It won't make any difference. And in addition to that, the, the green space, if you're talking about the pond and the clubhouse being part of the green space, it's not Hawks to go ahead and give us as far as green space is concerned. I don't know, if you want to ask an opinion of the law director, that's fine, but if that's owned by the condominium association, that's not part of this new development, that's part of his old development. I'm having a problem with the whole thing.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I would certainly refer to Grant on that.
But if it's part of the old, part of the development, and Hawk controls that old part of the development, doesn't it still apply? Grant, do you, you following this?
I hesitate to weigh in.
Hey, Robert, I'm asking you who owns that.
Make sure it is the condo association.
Given that some of these issues are new to me, I would hesitate to weigh in to give you a direction and advice on some of those issues without looking into it further. I just don't feel comfortable without looking at, more closely at the current structure of how things are in the old development, as well as the new proposed one, to give you a definitive answer.
Is there any legal problem with us maybe tabling this until the next meeting?
I'm not aware of any of...
We can't, we just looked up the owner of the clubhouse, and it is owned by TIP Properties LLC, not the condo association.
Really? Okay.
And I'll check the pond here in one second. And that is owned by the Troy Investment Group. So, they're not owned by the condo association.
So, TIP Properties LLC, who I believe is probably Mr. Hawk, but isn't part of the application here, owns the clubhouse. You know, I feel a lot more comfortable table this thing.
We can certainly go back to him and have him clarify that.
Your first line of the, of the discussion, Roger Hawk, on behalf of the Troy Investment Group LLC...
He's got several businesses, yeah, but the Troy Investment Group, it doesn't own the clubhouse, R.L. Hawk owns the clubhouse.
So Roger owns the clubhouse, TIG owns the other piece.
Yeah, the applicant.
So he is in control of both?
He's controlled both properties, but we can certainly get something from him in writing, or require something of him, should planning commission request that.
And I think what we'd want to do is have somebody review the condominium documents, and come to a decision as to how that's going to be impacted by this application, and let us know.
So, asking Mr. Kerber to look into this and have a report to, to the, for the next planning commission, I'd make a motion to retable it.
And I'll second it.
Motion seconded, table. No discussion, please call the roll. Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayhend?
Yes.
Titterington?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
And Grant, I think one of the things you want to take a look at is, what is the impact, if we approve this, and council approves it, then the condominium is out there, and Mr. Hawk doesn't have any right, after that, I don't believe, to go ahead and change the condominium documents amended. You might also want to take a look at the condo documents and see whether or not there's any agreement by Mr. Hawk to provide a clubhouse and a pond to the condominium association, in which case, he's leveraging it against two different things. And if you want to talk to whoever created the condominium documents, let me know, I'll talk to you. Next matter on the agenda is a withdrawal of a rezoning request for an eight-acre tract on Good Lot 9891, does staff have a report?
Yes, we do, thank you. In your packet, you will see a letter from Nottingham Development, Inc. This was the property that was currently approved to be rezoned from agricultural residential to the R3B single-family zoning district. This is the eight acres located at Nottingham Road, just north of Finsbury Road. They have asked to withdraw the application for the rezoning, so at this point in time, after conferring with our law director, planning, this comes back to the planning commission, who will determine whether or not they wish to have a public hearing on this, and then make a recommendation to city council to accept the withdrawal of the application, which then would revert the property back to its original city zoning of agricultural residential.
Do we want to hold a public hearing? Let me add your motion.
Now, does council want to hold a public hearing?
Yes, yes, they do.
Then I would make a motion that we do not hold a public hearing for this.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by B. Any further discussion? Please call the roll on this one, affirmative response is not to have a public hearing.
Mayor Vines?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayhend?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Ms. McGary?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next, we have the recommendation of council concerning the withdrawal of the rezoning request. Does commission want to take any action?
I would say that if this is coming at the request of the property owner, I would move that we send that forward to council with a positive recommendation.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Just a question, this is coming from Mrs. Minesinger, she is not the owner of the property. Do we have anything that says owner of the property is agreeable to this?
We do. I did have a conversation with the owner, and I did get an email from him stating that he is okay with the application being withdrawn as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Kerber?
I would just like to clarify one, one point with respect to this. As you know, this property was subject to a referendum, and the, the revised code, as it refers to referendums, specifically states that a city council can repeal the ordinance if it's subject to the referendum, and it will not go on the ballot, in this case, the November ballot, so, you know, we talked about withdrawing the application, actually, this is a repeal of the prior rezoning, and I just wanted to clarify that it's not accepting the withdrawal, it's actually a repeal of the ordinance.
So our recommendation should be to repeal?
Repeal the, I think, what was it, O8 or O9, 2018?
Right. O9.
O9.
O9, 2018.
If I may ask, then, if, if it's council repealing an ordinance, it still has to come back through planning commission for a recommendation?
Well, there was some question about that, because as you know, if the city council's going to act in any way contrary to the planning commission's recommendation, it takes a supermajority in that case, so out of abundance of caution, even though the planning commission has reviewed this before, this is really a rezon, because it's going to go back to its prior rezoning, so it doesn't really spell out in the revised code what the proper process is, they haven't tied the referendum language to a straight rezoning, so out of abundance of caution, I suggest that it go through planning commission again, so we didn't have any issues with council in the supermajority.
So is our motion then to recommend that council repeal their ordinance?
Correct, correct.
Okay, and I'm happy to make my motion have that language.
The request is for withdrawal, not a repeal. Do we have any problem with the request from the owner of the property to withdraw the application?
Well, what I specifically, and the owner reached out to the city, and we wanted something in writing, that this was their request before council acted upon this, and it certainly, and I think if you look at the correspondence, they want this ordinance repealed, so it reverts back to its prior rezoning.
So it's our law director's interpretation that withdrawal means repeal in that letter that we received?
I, yes, and I, and I, I'm sure Mr. Davis is happy to share the letter with everybody and see if you have the same...
We have a copy.
They have a copy.
Okay, yes. That's what it says.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kerber. Okay, and Mrs. Snead, you have amended your motion?
I just said, if the language needed to be that we're recommending that council repeal, then I'm happy to have my motion state that.
And you're seconding it, are you? Okay, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Mayhend?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Snead?
Yes.
Ms. McGary?
Yes.
Capper?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.